The the candidates. Uh, I just wanted to to um let you know that we will have Jeannie Kramer is one of our um ESP members and she'll be holding up a sign at twenty seconds when there's twenty seconds remaining. And again, when there's zero seconds remaining so that you um know how much time is left to respond to your questions and a few final notes, I'd like to uh thank our outgoing city council members from District fifteen and three, uh Grant Foster has served in District fifteen and Eric Paulson in District three and we are very grateful for their service and we're um looking forward to getting another candidate um elected who's just as committed and um hardworking to uh fill those seats. So with that, I think we'll get started and for the opening remarks, we'll go in order, starting with District three, then followed by District fifteen and sixteen. So we'll begin with uh Derek Field. If you'd like to offer your opening statement.
Absolutely. Thank you, Arden, and thanks, members of ESP, the Eastside Progressives, for having us tonight. Um. I am running for council uh because of the housing crisis primarily. So I've been in Madison for eleven years and moved here for school from my parents' farm in Blue Mounds, Wisconsin. Um. But two years ago, we landed in our neighborhood and bought our house uh. And it was a very eye-opening experience because I didn't realize how much demand there was for housing compared to the limited supply we have in this city and just how badly that was affecting prices. We went into the process without family money and, you know, it was a very um competitive process. So our twelfth offer got us our house, but it's it was really shocking uh to think about how it's affecting other folks around the community and in particular working families. Um. Quickly, more about me. I'm a data and analytics professional working for the state and I specialize in human services policy areas. I have a master's in public affairs and public policy analysis from the LaFollette School here at UW Madison. Um, and one of my core values working in city government would be supporting working families. So that's what I'm gonna talk about a lot about tonight and what I want to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll have Matt Van Eppen.
Yeah, um, thank you again. Um, and you actually pronounced it correctly, which not many people can do. So thank you for that. Um, so yeah, as she said, my name is Matt Van Eppen. I'm also running in District three. Um, you know why I ran? Uh, it all started with my son's birth. He's almost a year old now. Um, and I really wanted to kind of find a way to make sure, you know, as we raise him in the community, um, that it was a good community to live in, that you know, we could raise our family, um, grow our family and make sure, you know, my son and, you know, everyone else in the community can stay fit, stay safe and have the same opportunities um as everyone else and, you know, live a, live a great life. Um, a little bit about me, um, so I am currently a uh contracts negotiator at UW Madison for their research and sponsored programs office. Um, I came uh from actually Milwaukee, um, where I went to undergrad in law school at Marquette. Um, and then so my wife and I moved here afterwards. She's a teacher uh over near Wanakee. Um, and so, yeah, as Derek said, the housing crisis is real. We bought our house in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, it was not a fun process. Um, there's a lot that can be improved with that to give other people the folk or other folks the opportunity uh to have a home, um, and, you know, a lot of other uh economic opportunities that go along with living here in Madison.
And next we'll have District fifteen, beginning with Brad Hingfus.
Thank you. So um, I want to start out just by thanking uh the Eastside Progressives for providing this forum and this opportunity for us all to talk about issues. Um, so my name is Brad Hingfus. I have lived in the neighborhood for over twenty years. Uh, in that time, I have raised a family here. I've become deeply involved in all sorts of issues that matter most to to this committee, this community. Uh, I've learned to network and work with, bring people together around issues that matter to them. Housing, um, community festivals, neighborhood issues, safety issues. Um, I've been deeply involved in the neighborhood associations um and really led issues to bring things forward that have changed this neighborhood. Um, there have been housing developments. I've been directly involved in union corners, um, things along the main arteries, um, uh, as well as community centers, things going on with Garber Feed Mill, um, lots of issues that I've helped mobilize people around. During my daytime, my daytime job, I actually am in the director of a nonprofit organization that deals directly with the homeless and the mentally ill. We provide housing for them directly. Um, it's given me a deep passion and commitment for being able to work with vulnerable populations and people who are disadvantaged. I think of a deep understanding of that as well as many of the issues surrounding housing and what it takes to do housing, having over those twenty years been directly involved in a professional capacity, actually developing affordable housing projects. I've worked an awful lot with developers and other people. Through all of that, I think the most important thing is understanding that the voice that local residents who live in an area, all of you play in making good projects, great projects. Um, I think that starts with listening. So while I'm here to talk tonight, what I need to do mostly is listen to all of you, not just tonight, but going forward into the future so that the kinds of solutions that we bring to the issues that we face are the best that they can possibly be. So again, thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. I hope this is just a starting point. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next we'll have Dina Nina Martinez-Rutheford.
It's a mouthful, isn't it? Hi, I'm Dina Nina. Thank you, um, everyone for having us here and uh letting us talk about what we're all about. I am a small business owner. I moved here eleven years ago, almost eleven years ago, from Los Angeles on purpose. Um, and I figured I was either gonna get married or murdered and neither one has happened. So all good there. Uh, I'm a comedian and I run a com- uh comedy school and production company here in Madison where I've created community around primarily around women and queer people in comedy. And as a transgender woman, I understand what it's like to be pushed to the margins and not have our voice represented. So I, after the Club Q shooting, I decided that it was time for me to take a stand and be a part of the political discourse. Because they're coming after me and my friends and the people I love. So the big reason I'm here is because we need voices like mine on the, on the council. We need people that are transgender who are able to speak to the issues that we deal with every day. And as someone who's traditionally under-resourced and understands what it's like to have to eat rice for a month, I have a perspective of an under-resourced individual that I can bring to the table. Um, I love this city and I'm all about making it a better place for all of us and and working to include everyone at the table. I think it's incredibly important. So, thank you so much.
And last we'll have um candidates from District sixteen, beginning with JL Curry.
Thank you. Greetings, everyone, and welcome. Uh, thanks for spending your Friday night with us. And thank you to the Eastside Progressives for hosting this important forum. So my name is JL Curry and I have the honor of being the alder of District sixteen. Uh, in addition, I'm a master's level social service provider who's been working on the front lines to eliminate homelessness in our community through my full-time work at YWCA Madison. And it was about this time two years ago where I was introducing myself as a political newcomer newcomer with homegrown talent um who felt I was responding to an ethical call to serve my community on a wider scale. And with your support, District sixteen chose to elect me as its representative. And I'm proud of the wins achieved during my first time and yet know that there's still a lot of work to do. I'm seeking reelection to continue building upon this work and the knowledge I've acquired in order to create productive change. I am a lifelong Madisonian and East sider and I'm committed to and invested in serving the community I've lived my whole life as well as advancing progressive policies that continue moving Madison forward. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, we'll have Kim Richmond with District sixteen.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks to ESP for doing this as usual. Um, I am a lifetime lifelong East sider. I grew up in Eastmoreland, Shank Elementary, Shank Junior High and LaFollette High School. I've now lived in the sixteenth district for forty years. I'm running for alder to address the needs of this district, which by talking to people for years is public safety. We have an alder who, to me, feels out of touch with the number one concern, which is public safety. Um, our current alder comes from the defund the police angle and does not prioritize neighbor uh neighborhood safety. I am a colla- uh, a collaborator. I bring people together. Um, here we have a black police chief who I respect. He understands the issues and has a strategic vision for the city. He has goals and specific initiatives to make our city safer. He needs our support, but our alder has voted against all of his initiatives time and time again. She's voted against grant-funded officers to work proactively with our at-risk youth. Against body camera pilot that would bring greater transparency on both sides of the camera. I'm a collaborator. I have a track record of doing that. If I'm elected alder, I will listen to my constituents first and I will listen to the police chief and all other city staff to have a positive impact in our city. As a father, as a husband, as a concerned citizen and as a crossing guard, safety is number one and very important to me. And I know it's important to my neighbors and the entire district, if not the city.
Thank you. And now we'll begin with the first of our six questions. Um, we've decided to try something new this time and I'm going to be sharing out the questions as um I read them. And then when I'm done, I'll put the question in the chat so that hopefully um every candidate, I won't have to take up our time repeating the question, um, and candidates will be able to see it um the whole time as they're preparing their remarks. So with the first question, what issues or concerns do you believe are the top priority for your residents in your district? How do you hope to work with the rest of the city council to address these issues? And how will you reach out to constituencies who are less civically engaged? And for this question, we'll begin with District fifteen, then sixteen, and then three. And we'll be starting uh with Dina in District fifteen.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Um, I believe that one of the biggest issues is housing and affordability here in our district. There are a lot of single-family homeowners and here in the city but are in our district, but we're also pricing out every, our artists and and gig workers and people that are just living paycheck to paycheck or being priced over out of our city. I believe that it's important that we have a perspective of someone who's been under-resourced, who understands what uh affordability really is and make solutions, work with everyone on the council to make solutions to address those issues. I also believe that a collaborative approach with other bodies throughout our county and city is important, as well as community leaders who are doing the hard work on the ground. And oh, oh, sorry. And I will talk to everybody I can all the time because I'm a talker. And um those people who are not as civically engaged, it's my priority to make sure that they learn about their city.
You. And um for all the candidates, um, I I'm putting the questions in chat as well, so you can reference those. Um, next up we'll have uh Brad respond.
Thank you. So I agree that one of the top priorities for District fifteen um is indeed housing and affordability. But it's, it's not just that simple. District fifteen has actually got an awful lot of development pressures coming at it from many angles. Housing is one of those. Being able to address housing, when we look at housing as an issue, the way I look at it is that if someone actually works here, they should be able to afford to live here. We need more housing at all sorts of different levels for whatever someone may be making. So if someone's making a lot of money, if they're not making as much money, whatever their income is, so we need to be intentional in our approach about what kind of housing we're trying to build, because some types of housing are already being built. And frankly, the, the really wealthy housing is taking care of itself. What's not happening is the things are not being built for people who don't make as much, who need different affordability levels. Um, that actually is something that I've done a lot of work with in my professional life. I feel prepared to do that. I worked um with developers. I've organized residents around issues. There are ways that we can guide development in this district that responds to the needs of the city and the district, that makes the district better and stronger without infringing on, on the rights or the, the property of all the people who already live here. There are win-win solutions. I've done this sort of thing over and over again. Um, in many cases, many examples throughout the district already. I feel prepared. I feel that the, the position of alder is really an extension of a lot of the work that I've been doing already. Um, I'm excited to make new connections with additional people as we, as we talk about how to, to get to the bottom of this in terms of the especially affordability and housing. There are other issues. Um, I think that the environment, water in particular, is a big issue here in terms of um runoff during storms, the contamination in the wells, PFAS running through the watershed, Starkweather Creek that comes right through our district. These are critical issues that are very, very important for District fifteen. These are things that I have already been touching on in for years, had working with the water utility, working with friends at Starkweather Creek, um, talking to people at the airport. Um, there are a lot, there is not just, our, our issues are not one-dimensional. There's a confluence of things going on in District fifteen. I feel prepared. I'm knowledgeable in a lot of those. I feel ready to start listening to all of you and looking for real solutions. Thank you.
Thanks. We were out of time. Um, and next we'll have uh District sixteen, starting with Kim Richmond. I'm not sure if everyone can see Jeannie's camera in, in their speaker gallery to, to see the time.
Ready?
Candidates. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Kim.
No, that's okay. Uh, thank you. Um, again, um, going by what I've been talking to people, listening to people for the last a couple of years, if not more, and recently, um, public safety always comes up first, always. The first thing I ask, what are you concerned about? Uh, what are your concerns? And then people say, my safety. Um, for over three years, I've coordinated one of the Good Neighbor projects in Madison. Uh, our local one has over a thousand members. What we do is we collaborate. We bring people together. We try to solve issues. We talk about what we can do. Uh, let's see, um, I brought to get, I brought in speakers from uh mental health people. We've brought in a speaker from the juvenile court system. We brought in focused interruption. We brought in fire safety. We brought in police safety. Number one issue is, is uh neighborhood safety. So it's all about bringing people together, getting people together to talk and see what we can do about these issues. There are, there are core, um, there are problems that we can, that we can uh oh, let's say, trace back to the beginning, but we've gotta do something about it. Talk, talk about it, doesn't do anything. Another issue is transportation. Uh, for example, the BRT. Um, the city always has uh had a really good transportation system, I believe. Um, and they're still working hard, but with the BRT coming in, many residents are actually losing access. Uh, with some older adults and uh um handicapped people, I'm concerned that they have to walk fifteen and twenty minutes to get to the BRT stations. Um, everyone in the neighborhood needs to be able to access this transportation um and it make it accessible for everybody in every neighborhood. Um, I will work hard to make sure that all of our citizens uh will be able to get to their transportation um uh stops or entrances, whatever you want to call it. But uh, those are the two things I hear the most.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, um, we'll have JL Curry.
Thank you. So uh, similar to what many have already said tonight, I don't think District sixteen is exclusive in, in the issues that are um the concerns that we have and those are um public safety and health, public health and safety for all. Um, improving quality of life by promoting equitable outcomes, um, investing in and providing opportunities for our youth and continuing to provide reliable, high-quality city services. Um, over my term, uh District sixteen has grown in terms of industrial. And so having a focus on how to um revitalize our economy and keep our local businesses strong and supported here on the east side. As an incumbent, uh, I have had the privilege or uh honor of being able to build coalition and network with um my current peers who are on the council. And if re-elected, I uh seek to continue to do that. For instance, I was elected uh to serve as vice president, um, and I'm currently serving in that role on the council. Um, also in terms of reaching those who are less civically engaged, that is a number one priority and passion for me, um, especially in looking at the mission and values of our city. We talk about keeping equity at the forefront at all times. And that means diversifying um the thoughts and the perspectives that are before us as policymakers to make sure that we're making informed decisions that create equitable outcomes for everyone. Um, it's, it's a privilege to be in a position to have internet access and attend um council meetings virtually, but we need to strive to look towards more efforts to engage folks and also make government um accessible and understandable for folks to be engaged.
Thank you. And next we'll have District three, beginning with Matt.
Um, yeah, so not to be repetitive, um, but I, I do think that housing and public safety um are the two biggest issues as far as I've heard um from members of the district um that they're facing. So, um, you know, in terms of housing, uh, I think there's a lot that we can do. You know, we can look at rezoning. Uh, we can look at, um, you know, you know, making things more affordable, uh connecting the workforce with employers through apprenticeship and trade programs that would help workers actually build faster maybe. Um, so I, I do think housing uh is a big issue. Um, another thing that is a big issue is public safety. Um, and, and by that, it's not just like criminal behavior. It's, it's also non-criminal public safety risk. Um, so yeah, you'll have, you'll have the criminal uh public safety risk and, you know, for that, we do need to work with our leaders in law enforcement, uh Chief Barnes over here on the east side, the east district captain, I think it's Captain Gary. Um, so work with them on their visions for community policing. Make sure that they have the tools necessary um to engage in community policing, um, but then also make sure that, you know, law enforcement is being held accountable for, you know, bad acts and bad policing. Um, I don't think that's really unreasonable. Um, you know, in terms of non-criminal public safety risk, uh, that's the stuff like transportation infrastructure, um, clean water. One, when I was collecting signatures, one of the things that was brought up a lot was the Milwaukee Street Bridge over I ninety. Um, it is incredibly narrow. I don't know if, you know, how many people have driven over it, but it's incredibly narrow at, at night. It's really dark. Um, and a lot of people are afraid that, you know, eventually there's, there's gonna be a fatality. Um, so making sure that we deal with the underlying causes of um crime uh and making sure that non-criminal public safety risks are also taken care of.
Thank you. And uh lastly, Derek.
Thank you. I'll be echoing a couple of comments made earlier. Um. So the cost of housing in particular, I think, is my biggest concern and what I'm hearing about from people all over the, the neighborhoods out here. So it's a pretty relatable phenomenon right now that people's kids can't afford to, you know, pay rent anymore and are moving home or that seniors are worried about keeping up with the rising cost of living. Um, and they want to age in place in the house where they raise their kids, but that's increasingly difficult renters. Um, the rent has gone through the roof in the city and I would bring more supply to Madison. So I would work with, uh, I'd like to sit on the plan commission and work with um development projects and rezoning um initiatives to allow for more density along transit corridors to bring more housing options to Madison and increase the supply to meet demand where it is, so that price growth stabilizes. Um, driving behavior is another one that I'm hearing a lot about when I do doors. So people are pretty concerned about not just the normal traffic pattern of driving too fast, but also uh dangerous driving behavior. And so I'm interested in road safety improvements um that the city is bringing to the district and I want to continue bringing more traffic safety improvements to the district in the form of redesigning intersections and slowing drivers down. Um, I appreciate the radar signs that remind me if I'm speeding and I imagine plenty of other people will too. Um, but, you know, I, I live right next to Milwaukee Street and I worry about folks on this side of the street who cross to go to Kennedy Elementary or Kennedy Park. Um, that's the route that I take and it is not safe to cross right there. Um, so I'm very, very interested in working on those. In terms of bringing in folks who aren't traditionally involved in the civic process, I have started uh building some relationships with community folks and service providers uh over here on the east side and would continue to do so as an alder, including the Eastside Community Center, Sore Case Management Services, social workers here at Kennedy and White Horse, and then um the Future Imagination Center, which is gonna be serving that portion of the east side district over here too. Um, so I would talk to the experts and see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. And our second question, I'm gonna try again sharing my screen and we'll take a look at that. And then I'll, I'll put it in the chat for everyone to see. Um, many of you have touched on this already. This is a transportation question. The quality of life for Madison residents is impacted by many transportation issues. In your opinion, what are the most pressing transportation issues and what recommendations do you have for improving transportation in the Madison area? And we'll um be starting with uh District sixteen candidates, beginning with JL and then moving on to District three and then District fifteen. So um JL, you're up first.
Thank you for the question. Um, so I wanna talk about some actions that have already been started or are in process. So, um, as my work at the YWCA, um, work with very extremely low to low-income households who are primarily relying on public transportation um for all their transportation needs. So, um, I am supportive of implementing um and, and proud that we have implemented the Bus Rapid Transit System as well as a network redesign of that system. Um, if you've rode the bus before and try to go to other sides of the city, um, or thinking trying to plan a whole morning trip of getting to work, dropping your kids off to school, it takes a long time to get throughout our city. So I think providing more rapid uh frequent service um will increase um ridership and increase uh access to those who are solely relying on it. But also, also, um, those of us who have the privilege and opportunity to make a choice of using public transportation. Think then when we um translate to uh driving, those of us who have vehicles, whether that's carpooling or, or single-vehicle use, um, safety on our streets. Um, I think some other folks tonight have talked about pedestrian safety, uh, traffic safety. And so looking at uh District sixteen or just even the east side, we are a corridor. We um have access to the interstate, access to the Belt Line, and there are some important studies that are um currently in progress to uh decrease and mitigate some of the extreme risks. Think our um uh intersection over uh off of County Highway AB is one of the most dangerous. Um, and so continuing to work with the city and the Department of Transportation um for innovative ways of how we can continue to keep our streets safe.
Thank you. And next we'll have Kim.
Thank you, Arden. Um, I, I kinda touched on it a few minutes ago. I am concerned about the loss of bus, I guess, bus stops, they called, used to call them. Um, not just here on the far east side, but also the north side. I, I am in contact with some people up there and some alders. And they're mentioning the same thing. Everything seems to be east-west and not so much northeast and north. But I am, again, totally concerned about um handicapped people or an older adults that have to walk farther to get to the bus system. Um, there's a lot that can be done yet as far as talking to us, talking to residents. Um, there needs to be, and you're gonna hear this from me a lot tonight, collaboration. There's gotta be more of that. I don't care if it's on the common council, if you're talking to any city departments, there's gotta be more public input, more public awareness, more transparency. A lot of things have been done, especially in the last few weeks, that have uh undermined some neighborhoods that that they got caught off guard. The neighborhoods have to be part of this BRT. They have to be part of the input. It's all about accessibility. It's all about getting to where you want to go in a good amount of time and not having to wait or walk further with a new system than before it.
Thank you. Next, we'll have District three, starting with Derek.
Thank you. You know, on transportation, I do not think that adding more lanes solves anybody's problems. So we've just seen that as the kind of Band-Aid solution on the Belt Line to try to get more people around Madison. That probably, in the short term, makes trips faster and incentivizes more people to use their cars and to take drive trips around town. I am an advocate for public transportation. I take the bus system to work myself. I'm a big fan. I'm I am concerned about the loss of through neighborhood service out here in our districts. But I think that retention and improvement of service along the main transit corridors where development is happening is key going into the future. So I'm very supportive of better and more development or density along transit corridors to give people who move there the option to use reliable and high-quality bus service. I think that's going to be a must for the city going forward, and I think that that's, I agree, it's a quality-of-life issue because that's how a lot of people, particularly who can't afford cars, will access core services and basic human needs.
Thank you. Next, Matt.
Yeah, so I I think the most pressing transport- transportation issues, like other people have said, is basically connecting people to to where they need to go or to where they want to go. Yeah, you know, the BRT helps because that's where a lot of the development is. At the same time, if you're taking away opportunities for other folks just to get there, you know, that also is an issue that needs to be solved. In terms of, you know, using the road, yeah, we need to make sure there's pedestrian safety, make sure to protect bike lanes, make sure that, you know, there are bike lanes even. And, you know, make sure the streets are safe. So how to improve transportation in the Madison area? I think street redesign, it's happening right now. I think we need to be smart with that. And one way to do that is through public input, making sure that community, you know, they know what they need and making sure that, you know, we connect them with folks on the council and in the city who are making those decisions. You know, another thing that I would want to look at would be how to incentivize public transportation. You know, right now is the cost of using public transportation, you know, cost prohibitive for, you know, folks. If it, if we make public transportation cheaper, would more people use it? And, you know, where would those services need to go in the city to make that more used? So that's what I would want to look at.
Thank you. And last, we'll have District fifteen, starting with starting with Brad.
Thank you. So most pressing issues in terms of transportation, I would say one of the big ones is certainly congestion. Anyone who's trying to move around the city at rush hour understands that congestion is is a major issue. Part of that is an over-investment on just one form of transportation. I think safety is also an issue associated with transportation. Most of the time when people feel most unsafe is when they're trying to cross a really busy road or someone is speeding by or something like that. Also, there's affordability. There's an equity issue with transportation. And if we only have one means of transportation, that's personal automobiles, and not everyone can afford one or can afford parking, it's or things are too congested and they run late, we've got a very lopsided system. So as we pivot and we think more about solutions to that, we've got some things at foot. BRT, Bus Rapid Transit is definitely part of that. It's about getting people where they need to go more quickly and having those those main transportation options close to where a lot of the development is happening. I think that that's very forward-thinking in terms of a solution. It's what's key with transportation is investing in options. So we don't, we're not doing away with personal automobiles. Instead, we're infusing options in there that are affordable and that are accessible. So as we redesign our streets, we're able to do that in ways that promote safety that allow for enough vehicular traffic, but are also have good bus systems like BRT that's there. But we also have to pay attention to things like bicycle transport and pedestrian being able to walk around. People walking places is actually a means of transportation, or at least we hope so. If the only way you can get somewhere is in your car, then that's a problem. So investing in good design of our streets and of our neighborhood, the entire district, is definitely part of the solution. I've been part of solutions like that. I look forward to it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Dina.
Yeah, so transportation, big deal. I moved here from Los Angeles, like I said. I was on the transit system in LA, pretty reliable. I moved here and it took me two hours to get from the east side to the west side. And that was most of my day, just traveling. It was like driving to Chicago and back, you know? It was, it was most of my day. I could not, I could not do all the things that I needed to do. So with the BRT, I'm looking forward to seeing how that plays out. And I'm also looking forward to hopefully being part of the conversation when it comes to it. I love that transit is is being focused around communities that have less access to those facilities. And and it's important to make sure that we are meeting the needs of those who are just trying to take care of their families, getting to their work and getting home, paying bills, taking care of everything. Because when our public transit doesn't work well, it affects mostly people who are under-resourced and communities that have been under-resourced. So I'm looking forward to what BRT has to offer, but I'm also looking at, looking forward to seeing what else we can do. One of the things that I really appreciate is the twenty is plenty. And for putting that everywhere, letting people know, hey, you can slow down and breathe for a second, is really important. I love that Madison, to me, feels like it's very built with bikers and walkers in in mind. The trails that are happening are beautiful and amazing, and I think that incentivizes us getting out, communing with people and also being part of, like, seeing the streets. Like, I love going through my neighborhood, walking through my neighborhood and seeing something that I'd never seen, that I'd never seen before. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Long-winded I am.
Next up, we'll have question three, and and this one will start with District three, then District fifteen candidates, and then District sixteen candidates. Let me share my screen again. This question is, covers two slides. So without a doubt, more affordable housing is needed in Madison, but quality affordable housing, both rental rental and owner-occupied in and of itself will not be successful without adequate resources. What would your quality affordable housing plan look like? Please address transportation, food access, livability, and funding in the plan you offer. And we'll be starting with Matt in District three.
Yeah, big question, good question, though. So in terms of affordability, making housing more affordable, I think there's a few things that, you know, the council can at least look at. You know, making sure that, or, you know, examining down payment assistance on folks who want to buy a home or wants, you know, have an ownership residence, but just don't have access to capital and helping them with the down payment to purchase that property. We can look at maybe certain property tax exemptions where, you know, we allow or, you know, give a property tax break to, you know, a developer that allows them to build higher and build more dense. I think density helps a number of factors. It makes, well, first of all, produces more units in in terms of, you know, even if it's just apartments and condos and helps make things affordable if we say, okay, well, you know, here's a, here's a tax break. You have to incorporate X amount of units or X percentage of units in that, in that development that's, you know, for lower-middle income housing. We can look at zoning, examine accessory dwelling units, see if that is, you know, enough council members would be interested in, you know, making those legal. Zoning issues, upzoning, rezoning, whatever it is, making it easier, providing maybe a tax break to owners to rehabilitate houses, fix problems that exist. You know, maybe they have asbestos or lead pipes, whatever it may be. But building dense, I think, affects and helps a lot of the issues, especially around transportation, food access. Because where there's people, you know, there's going to be resources. So density, I think, helps solve a lot of the problems. And then, you know, the problems that still exist, the community or the city can then address.
Thank you, Matt. And next we'll have Derek. And again, I know it's a long question. It's in the chat.
Thank you. For me, this one is a lot about the geography and planning around affordable housing. So I think that for affordable housing in particular, it's really important that affordable housing projects and more supply of housing be available to bring prices down. But then specifically publicly subsidized affordable housing be available along transit corridors where people who live there have options to get around the city to get what they need. I think it's really important that that transportation be accessible to folks with disabilities and who need accommodations to board and then de-board buses and get around the city. So we need to account for that in sidewalk and intersection design, especially where a lot of people are going to be going. So on food security, that's a tough one in our district because we don't have a lot of located here, we don't have a lot of service providers that are directly available for people where they are. I think that's a problem, and I think it's a planning problem that I want to work on in city government. So specifically, community associations and organizations that provide direct human services to folks who benefit from them. Right now, folks have to leave, primarily leave the district if they want to access the East Side Community Center or go to the nearest food pantry. Livability, I think that affordable housing located near parks is a great thing, particularly for families who would be living in affordable housing, like buildings with affordable housing and located near jobs, which ties back to transportation, of course, so that people can get around, get to their jobs from where they're living. And other basic services too, like healthcare. So I'm, you know, interested in encouraging affordable housing with access to these services. In terms of funding, it's just gotta be a budget priority. You know, making more funding available for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as well as leveraging private capital where developers are willing to invest in communities and put up structures people can live in safely. I would argue that working families in Madison can't afford for us not to make it a budget priority.
Thank you. Next, we'll have District fifteen and then District sixteen. And we'll start with Dina.
Yes, thank you. We absolutely need to prioritize affordable housing. And when I talk about affordable housing, I mean, housing for people who are low-income, creating density within areas that are near transportation access, grocery stores, you know, all of the essential public accommodations is very important, especially for those of us who are under-resourced. We need to be able to get to our jobs and back in a reasonable amount of time and go across the street to the grocery store and take our groceries home. We also need to make sure that we are focusing on the middle-priced housing. We've got a lot of luxury apartments going up, and I would love to live in a luxury apartment, but I can't live in a luxury apartment. I can barely live in a non-luxury apartment. So I think it's important that we focus on equity when it comes to it, as far as housing. When we look at organizations that are doing the good work, like Own It, an organization that is helping empower black homeowners to build equity and build wealth, generational wealth for them, I think is is a good place to start leaning towards and teaming up with everyone that we can. As far as, what was the last thing? I'm so sorry. Yeah. I'm just a fat translator with a big heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Brad.
Sure, thank you. So in terms of a quality affordable housing plan, this is an area where the city can really be a leader. The city has the ability to set policy. The city has the ability to to incentivize. I've seen projects like this work. There's a lot of it that's afoot right now. This is an area where the alders can really make a difference, city council can really make a difference. For me, affordable housing needs to be very integrated. It can't be that it's over there or that we're creating ghettos or concentrations of affordable housing. Instead, it needs to be part of the fabric of every place in the city, everywhere we live, so that the people who are very wealthy are right next door to the people who are not so wealthy. That is what really builds healthy communities. In terms of how we, how we move that forward, again, the city sets the standard with zoning, with planning, with building codes. And then the city is also able to work with limited resources, limited tax dollars to incentivize private investment. And the city is able to really kind of set the standard with, with what do we want? When we talk about housing, we need to be sure that we're building much of the, in the, we need to be building it at the levels that it needs to be built. So the affordable workforce housing, the lower-income housing. As we do that, and we do that densely, and as others have said, along transportation corridors, so that there are real options there for people, that density will in turn drive all sorts of other good things around there, the grocery stores, the the restaurants. All of the things that that we all want will come when there are enough people living there. And that's, that's the kind of planning that we can do on an integrated basis. It builds equity, it builds affordability, it builds in options, it builds in livability. There are, I feel that we have that afoot in District fifteen. We are surrounded by opportunities that we need to be able to work with this at the city and at the local level to make real, so that this becomes an even better place to live. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up, we'll have District sixteen, starting with Kim and then GL.
Uh, thank you. This kind of hits home. My daughter wants to live in Madison. She's got a very good job. She's single. She could not find an affordable home in Madison. She had to find one in Janesville. So she still works in Madison, but she had to go to Janesville to find something that she could afford. There's gotta be incentives for first-time homebuyers. I believe, well, in Eastmoreland, we grew up in a house that couldn't been, couldn't have been more than a thousand square feet, three bedrooms, four kids. I think that's what developers have to do more of, is smaller houses, quality houses. Not twenty-four-hundred-square-foot monsters that that are overspaced. I think we can get smaller lots, more houses, if if they were smaller homes. And again, incentives for first-time homebuyers. Now, everybody has not had an equal chance over the years to get, to get loans, to get funding. So we should probably, and if I were an alder, I would push to get folks that have been in the past, black folks, Hispanics, anybody that has been unable to to get loans in the past, help them out first. And then, again, first-time homebuyers. There's gotta be an incentive. And the developers will still be able to build their buildings, but they will be more affordable for people. As far as getting to food and 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 getting to resources, that comes down to the transportation system if people are unable to to use a vehicle. And that's where I am concerned again about BRT stops. They've gotta continue to be accessible for people.
Thank you. And lastly, GL.
Well, the privilege of going last, a lot of what I was gonna say has already been said, but to kind of reiterate, definitely it needs to be accessed to a range of transportation. So a lot has been focused on public transportation, but also safe, safe corridors for pedestrians. I read or picked up a copy of the latest ISMS issue, and it reminded me of an effort one of my peers in the council had regarding forming a truth and reconciliation process for the city. So what that means is recognizing as a government entity and municipal So what that means is recognizing as a, a government entity and municipality, how. Consciously and unconsciously, we've blended into some of the disparities that we're seeing within housing. Not just homeownership, but also being able to rent. And so we need to look towards building communities. It's really a challenge to encompass all of the, the dynamics that have been addressed, transportation, food access, livability, and then funding. But I am hopeful and actually really excited there's a possible opportunity that could be coming to District sixteen. Soon, that encompasses many of those needs. So the BT Farms and the plan to create the first agrahood or agricultural development. Where there's a focus on building communities, there's also a healthy communities, also a focus on. Empowering black and indigenous populations and those who have been marginalized when it comes to housing and housing opportunities. There's also a component of food access by providing urban agriculture, growing your own. Also, space to facilitate or conserve green spaces and have recreation. But above all, it's a community and making sure that community has access to be able to meet their basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to question number four, I'll share my screen now again. And. This time we'll have. We will have District fifteen start, beginning with Brad, and then sixteen, and then District three. So the question is, there are strong feelings about crime and police in East Side neighborhoods and schools. First, what is your position on SROs? And second, what is your plan to improve resident safety on the east side? And we'll start with Brad.
Alright, thank you. So what's my position on SROs and school resource officers, what you're referring to? I think that, I, I think that that needs to be decided on a school-by-school basis. I think it needs to be out there as an option, but I think that different schools have very different experiences. I think that those schools individually can come together, the, the parents, the administration. The students, the concerns that they're facing there, is this appropriate here or is this not? What has been our experience here? What has it not been? I'm moving into the, the larger issue of resident safety here. I think the question we need to ask ourselves first, before making, jumping to any conclusions is. Who is it that feels unsafe and what do they feel unsafe about? Some of these may be things that can be addressed by the police, but frankly, most of our greatest insecurities are things. That the police may react to, but they are, they're not, they are issues of insecurity, of economic insecurity, of housing insecurity. Of mental health insecurity, of educational insecurity, of, of lack of employment. There are a lot of things that if we divert resources there, we're addressing root causes rather than reacting to them. So what do I think, my approach to safety again is asking people, who is it that feels unsafe? What is it exactly that they are unsafe about? This does change as we move around the city, there is no blanket answer. There's a District fifteen answer that's going to be different than a downtown answer or a west side answer. I think that that's a conversation we need to have, we need to be, we need to have people who feel unsafe at the table. Not to presume that we know those answers. So what is it that you're, that you feel unsafe about? And how do we address those? And more importantly, how do we address those underlying causes? So that our solution is not to react to it with police, but to stop it from ever being an issue in the first place. I mean, safety comes from strong communities, first and foremost. That have low crime rates, that address the needs of the people who live there. I feel that we have that potential in District fifteen, I've seen an awful lot of that afoot. But we need to have those disadvantaged people, the people who feel unsafe at the table, telling us exactly why it is that they feel unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Dina?
Yes, as somebody who's lived in big cities. I am excited that I live in this city and I can leave my computer at the coffee shop. And walk away to go to the restroom and not fear like it's gonna be stolen. I, I echo a lot of what Brad said, I do believe that safety is. Really, a lot of the violence and crime that is happening is all because of mental, stems from mental health. So I believe, and really focusing on. Expanding the CARES program and working with the. Dean County Violence Prevention and the roadmap is very important. I am excited for people that are already doing the hard work, like Focus and Interruption. And I believe that when we focus on our mental health, we'll be a lot safer because we're able to have more capacity. To deal with our stressors. And as far as SROs, I have opinions about that and I, I, but I will defer that to. The school board who has the prerogative to rule on that. That's between them and the schools. I, like I said, I have opinions, but when it comes to that, that's a school board issue and I will let them. Make those decisions, so.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from District sixteen, starting with GL.
Yes, thank you. So similar to what Dina just said, I do have a position on SROs. I have children in the MMSD district and, and I'm alum of the district myself. But I believe during such a. Politically fueled campaign season, it's been misinterpreted of what the city council has control over. And so we'll rely on continuing to build upon networks and connections with the Board of Education members. But we, we must put our youth front and center. I know that they are the main subject of, of many conversations as it relates to public safety and crime even. Contract, contrary to a statement that was made earlier, I am not part of the defund the police movement. But similar to Brad and Dina, believe we need to look at what are the root causes of crime? We have kids showing up to school, expected to learn, who are in, food insecure and hungry. You can't learn in that environment. There are schools who are forming essential pantries to provide clothing and other basic needs. So imagine if the kids don't have access to that, what their households may be facing. And I truly believe as a social service provider, that when we focus on root causes, we will alleviate things that lead to crime. And continue to work with Madison Police Department and the work that they are doing. We have a neighborhood resource officer who makes connections in some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods. And is data-driven, but also connecting folks to resources. So I believe it's about looking at what basic needs are and knowing that we have disparities. But also trying to bridge gaps in those disparities and basic needs, so that everyone has a fair chance at surviving and thriving.
Thank you. Next, Kim?
Thank you. I will not be afraid to, to give my opinion on SROs. I was disappointed when the school board decided not to have them. My two kid, I mentioned I went to La Follette, that was a long ago. My two kids were at La Follette in the two thousands. The SROs, they both, they had two different SROs. They were their friends, they could connect with, with them. They had the pulse of what was going on in the schools. They can't prevent everything, but they have prevented things and there's, there, I mean, there is proof of that. I was really disappointed, yes, it's a decision of the school board, but I would always support an SRO in schools. They don't have to be in uniform, they can have polo shirts, blue jeans, like the core team goes very. Un-police-like, although they do have to carry certain things. I would totally support that if it, if, if I was ever asked. Regarding safety, what am I, my plan is to continue doing what I'm doing. Not only with the Good Neighbor Project, but with talking to people. I want to get people together, I want to, I believe it was one of the other, one of the other candidates mentioned. Bringing people to the table, and again, that's what I'm about. Perception, somebody once said perception is reality, that's not always true. But perception to a person can be a real, reality. If something happened to a neighbor of mine behind me, I perceive that as, as a problem. There are problems. We are relatively safe here in Madison, but I will continue to meet with people. I will meet with people in their environment, I will go wherever they want to meet. I will go when it's convenient for them, I will sit down with them and talk to them, see how we can make the sixteenth district better. And safer, and the entire city. Currently, with understaffing, police can't always get to the schools when there's problems in, in time, in time. Just in the last couple of weeks, there's been problems at East and La Follette. I see I'm not zero, so sorry about that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have more opportunity. So next we'll have District three, starting with Derek and then Matt.
Yeah, I appreciate the question about SROs. I have good personal friends and folks that I know who do work in district, different MMSD schools. Who are on the opposite sides of that issue for very good reasons. And so it's a, it's a tough one that I think should be left to schools to make a decision about on a school-specific context. You know, about safety generally here on the east side, I'm a big supporter of and believer in the Madison CARES program. That's the Alternative Response Program that folks can call as an alternative to police if they need help or are in crisis. And the first year of that program's data was made available to the public in November. Showing that they responded to over nine hundred calls and responded to almost all of them in the field and on-site without referrals to police officers. And that tells me that the folks who need help from the CARES program are calling the right number, they're finding it there. Not everybody who's going through a situation like that needs or wants to interact with police officers at that time, and I think that's appropriate. At the same time, that also allows east side officers, well, officers around the city, but in particular here on the east side. To not respond to those calls and instead focus on other public safety-related issues out in the field to keep us safe. So I would commit to working with and talking to the police department about where their calls are coming from and learn more about the root causes of those service calls. Because I do believe that poverty is one of the core root causes of a lot of, particularly the property crime that we see here around Madison. And so that really brings me back to the rising and spiraling costs of living and cost of housing here in town, which I don't think is sustainable. And I think it puts desperate, or working families in desperate situations too often. So I want to take a holistic view to public safety on the east side.
Me too. And Matt?
Yeah, thanks. So in terms of the school resource officers, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. But kind of like the others, again, I don't mean to punt the issue, but you know, it's not for me to make a decision for another school. It should be left up to the individual schools in consultation with their staff, with the students and with the parents and guardians. Because the people who are in schools who are involved with the individual schools know what that specific school needs. You know, school resource officers, they, they serve a purpose, right? But you know, a lot of the times, you know, depending on the school resource officer. They can feel threatening to students, particularly students of color. And when students feel threatened, for whatever reasons, at the school. That inhibits both personal and academic growth. And then, you know, the outcomes of that, the consequences of that, you know, expand beyond back into the community. So SRO should really be, you know, a school-specific issue. In terms of how to improve resident safety over here on the east side. I think I was, as I was saying at the beginning, really got to work with MPD. Chief Barnes over here, the East District Captain Gary, I believe, work on their visions for community policing. The key is to have the community, have the residents and the law enforcement know each other, trust each other, develop those relationships that they can trust. But also support MPD and their efforts for, you know, community programs, support the mental health unit, you know, things like that. You know, throwing money, taking money away from the police department, that's not really going to solve an issue. We have to know like where the money is going and what it's being spent for and spend it wisely. And again, I think I mentioned at the beginning, public safety is more than just criminal behavior, it's also non-criminal public safety risk. Like infrastructure, environment, things like that, that we need to, to solve. And the underlying causes of crime, food insecurity, housing insecurity, jobs, mental, physical health, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Another tough question. So we're moving into our fifth question and we'll have District sixteen first, then District three. And then District fifteen. And we'll be starting, let me share the question. We'll be starting this time with. With Kim? A moment, did I not share? I am sorry. So this is a, another long question. Describe how your understanding of group dynamics gained through your professional and/or volunteer experiences. Will help you to work effectively with all units of city government, as well as with neighborhood groups. Particularly when the different stakeholders are at odds with one another. So, Kim, would you like to start?
Okay, thank you, I'm reading that over again, just, I can't see it in the chat.
I'm sorry, let me. I can, I don't have it in chat just yet, so I am happy to read it again.
I'm processing it, just not all at once.
Yes. So describe how your understanding of group dynamics gained through your professional and volunteer experiences. Will help you work effectively with all units of city government, as well as neighborhood groups. Particularly when different stakeholders are at odds with each other.
Well, here it is again, collaboration, I think what's that, seven, eight, nine, ten times now? That's what it's all about. You've got to sit down at the table, you got to bring all parties to the table, and you have to talk. Madison is, I can't say it's really divided. But if you don't go quote with the flow, you're looked down upon. You have to sit down, and I don't care what your political leanings are, I don't care who you are, where you're from. Your race, your religion, your background, everybody must have an equal seat at the table. That's the only way to get anything done, is to come together and talk. I have sat down and talked with people that I didn't know, that I've just met from discussing things on social media. Or heard this from somewhere, this person wants to meet you, or I'd like to meet that person. And we've got a hold of each other and sat down and talked. We maybe didn't agree, but we could, we could talk over a beer and agree to disagree. And maybe come together a little bit. Many times, and I was talking to a person just a few weeks ago. We had a heck of a lot more in common than we thought, but there was only one or two things we didn't agree with each other. Patted each other on the back, hugged each other, shook hands and left. It's, it's all about talking, it's all about talking, transparency, have everything out in front. Nothing behind any closed doors. I can't say it enough, sit down at the table, I don't care if it's twenty people, fifty people, sixty people. And talk, just discuss, discuss your differences, celebrate your differences. And go forward with that, that, that's the, that's from my experiences from working with people from all walks of life. Small businesses, big businesses, small towns, big towns. Professionals, people like me, I'm a regular guy, I'm a regular east side guy and I'm proud of it. Obviously, I'm not a polished politician, and I never will be. But that's what you have to do, is come together and talk, please.
Thank you. GL?
Thank you. So again, having kind of the privilege of being an incumbent and having nearly two years of experience. Navigating the city in my role as an alder has really given me a good footing in this area. I think also because I am a Madisonian and I bring forth diverse identities and perspective and thought. I have really come to understand how group dynamics work, especially when there's tension or, or. Folks on the opposite side of, of an issue. I think when it comes to having conversation and discussion, especially when. I think when it comes to having conversation and discussion, especially when. Um, it can be very personal and personally charged, we always have to consider um, systems and dynamics. And within um, the council last uh, campaign season, there was a lot of publicity of us being the um, most diverse. Council in history, and yet you see that we still don't always agree with each other, and that's okay. But I think understanding the the dynamic of racism and the dynamics of power and how they play in different environments. You can't go into chambers of of the city council and have conversations um, like you can standing at somebody's doorstop. Uh, you have to immerse yourself in environments and situations that are different than yours and be okay with that. And also not try to force opinions upon someone based on your own experience thoughts. You have to speak for your own experience for yourself as you live it and be an advocate and ally in other areas. And so I think my ability to bring people together and focus on creating positive solutions resulted in my appointment. To being the Council Vice President in my first year of being elected. Um, and continuing to dedicate uh, my service to meeting those human and social needs. And being able to recognize sometimes when my power or influence um, isn't helpful and I need to take a step backwards.
Thank you. Next we'll go to District Three candidates, beginning with Matt and then Derek.
Um, yeah, so you know, one of the important things to recognize is that not every group is going to have the same wants and needs. The key is to understand where they're coming from, um, and and why they feel that way. Um, and just to be comfortable with the uncomfortable, um, you know, get yourself into those situations to kind of see and hear where other people are coming from. And why uh, they view things the way that they do. Um, I think that's one way to to grow personally and and professionally on on the council. Um, a big thing is um, collaboration, working with people who don't look like you, who don't, you know. Believe the same things you do, um, finding a common ground to get something done, um, to help the people. Um, that's, that's the big thing. Um, and also just honesty, um, you know, people, I think, understand that. You know, no matter who's elected, they're probably not going to agree with them on a hundred percent of the things. Um, so just to be honest with them and tell you where where they are, um, but then also like when you, when you give a position, say why. Um, don't just say this is my position and then end there. Um, give them, you know, a reason or, you know, something that explains. Why you're voting the way you are, or you know, why you're supporting the policy that you are. Um, when I was clerk clerking for Judge uh, Judge Donald in the Family Truck Drug Treatment Court in Milwaukee. One of the things that he would always say that really struck me and stuck with me was give reasons, not excuses. Uh, and I think that's one thing that I think a lot of people could kind of take with them, and hopefully people do after hearing that. So give reasons, not excuses. Um, be comfortable, be honest, uh, be open, um, and give reasons.
Thank you. Derek?
Yeah, thank you. So I have six years of experience working with the state using data and analytics. To inform human services policy decisions. I've been in two agencies, both very large bureaucratic organizations where I have been in, like I said, data and analytics roles. Which is a fairly new space for a lot of state employees and state structures. And so whenever we're trying to use data to make policy decisions or to put together um, important measurement systems. It kind of has a tendency to shake things up. Lots of stakeholders, um, who, you know. Uh, are out in the field in schools, at counties and social service providers. Have opinions uh, about the way that state decision making happens and resources are allocated, and so we want to use data to do that. So with all of this experience, working on a lot of different projects and technical projects. I would bring a couple of points into um, the city government and my own role here in making decisions. Focusing first on centering what your goals are, identifying a problem statement. And what goals would work toward a solution to that problem, particularly uh, dealing with community needs here. And then forming your questions, what information do you need in order to consider which part of the problem you want to tackle or how to go about it? And that includes identifying who in the community has perspectives on that. So that's neighborhood groups, it's professionals in city staff, it's uh, other organizations around the city. Um, such as social services or human services providers who are working with the stakeholders you're trying to reach. Um, gathering all of that information and then using it to make a decision and being fully transparent throughout the process. So that's probably the best way for a credible solution um, to succeed in city government, right? Is to provide your rationale and the data supporting your rationale to explain the decision.
Thank you. And next up we'll have uh, Dina and then Brad.
Excellent. Um, so I am, I produce comedy. I work in diversity, equity, inclusion. I have been a general manager of a restaurant. I've uh, been a general manager of an office. I understand what it's like to work with people and work together for a common goal. Um, it's very important that we center equity in it when we, when we're talking about working with people. That make sure the individuals have a voice at the table that are underrepresented. Um, I. Am a comedian, I, you know, I diffuse. Conflict with humor. And humor is something that we all understand and we all know. And it hits us in that place that helps break down a lot of the barriers between people. And also like, I just. Really care. I really care about people. And what I want to see is all of us succeed, so everything I do is about making us succeed. And making us a better community, more integrated, more loved. Um, I'm, I'm gonna get woo woo there, like, we just need to have respect for each other and talk things through. And work together. Nothing's done by ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brad?
Thank you. So in terms of collaboration, I think that first and foremost, it has less to say. Less to do with what we may say and more to do with listening. For me, collaboration starts with two key things, listening and respect. I remember some years ago when I was managing the homeless men's drop-in shelter, and a lot of the guests there, the homeless men. Were really upset about some different policy things, and the most powerful thing that I could do was actually to go into the shelter. And sit with that big group of men and listen to them, not for me to tell them policy, but to listen. And to listen closely, and to actually talk very little, and to listen to my staff. And to listen to them, and then, and look for some sort of compromise moving forward. In the act of listening and and communicating to people that they're respected. They, it diffuses a tremendous amount of tension, and you realize that in the end what you're going to get to is compromise. That is the same sort of approach that I brought to a lot of neighborhood involvement. There may be a development that's proposed, and there may be some neighbors, neighborhoods or neighbors who are really upset about things. Those people need to be heard, people need to listen, they need to feel that their positions are acknowledged and respected. If people are listened to and they're respected, it does a tremendous amount to to ease the tension. And what you wind up getting out of that is a compromise. If anything is all of one or the other, then it leaves someone disenfranchised, and there's some loser in that equation. Most of our success is going to be compromised, and those compromises, because everyone has some skin in the game, wind up being the strongest solutions. Those are precisely the greatest things that I've seen already in District fifteen. That's exactly the kind of approach that I would bring moving forward. Less to do with what I have to say, more to do with listening to all of you, to my constituents, to everyone involved. Letting people know that I respect those positions, and how do we form compromise? How do we move forward with that collective knowledge? Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question before we'll have closing remarks where each candidate will have a minute to share. Uh, their closing statements, and I'll, I have to warn you, again, we have a, a lengthy question. Uh, two slides, so this question will start with District three, then move to District fifteen. And then finally District sixteen, uh, with three, we'll start with Derek. And the question is about environmental stewardship, uh, this requires the city to explore. Environmental stewardship, stewardship requires the city to explore new development approaches. To protect natural areas and waterways and to assure meaningful energy efficiency and sustainability. The question, what is your approach to balancing the demands for housing with the need to create environmentally sustainable communities? And again, we're starting with Derek. Should I leave that up for a moment?
I'm good, thank you. Um, I think it's really important to be aware of and sensitive to areas of the city. That play an important role in our natural environment and are particularly sensitive to human activity. And so I'm thinking about wetlands in particular, um, being of an important source of water infiltration. To absorb groundwater and replenish the groundwater supply and clean groundwater. And to mitigate flooding, flooding is a huge problem in Madison, other parts um, of the city more so than in my district. But nevertheless, uh, we're going to have to deal with a lot more flooding and more severe flooding as the climate continues to change. And so we need to mind all of the areas of the city that serve a vital um, uh, service to us. By absorbing excess water and helping to clean it and maintain lake quality. Um, so I am a lot more interested in seeing development happen, for example, farther from these sensitive natural areas. That play a vital role and are also are just an asset to the community. Um, in addition, I'm sensitive to the impact that construction projects have on uh, the environment. So I'm thinking about runoff from construction sites. And I'm very interested in seeing and scrutinizing more the developers' plans as part of construction proposals. To prevent runoff of sand and other debris, especially pollutants that might uh, run into our waterways and damage them as part of housing developments. I do think it's important to remember that Madison is in a housing crisis. Um, and so that means, you know, while these are a balance, I do want to see more housing happen around the city. Um, and particularly in support of working families.
Thank you. And Matt?
Yeah, um, so as Derek said, uh, we do need to protect uh, sensitive areas that exist, um. From development, just so we, you know, have them and and can keep them safe. Um, I think one or a couple of things that we could do that might help uh, is density. Uh, you know, if buildings are more dense, um, you know, we are building higher instead of this, you know, urban or suburban sprawl. That's happening in some other communities, uh, keeping people closer together and closer to resources. Um, I think helps with the environmental impacts and it helps with housing and producing more housing. Um, another thing that we could do, um, or at least examine is providing incentives for green or clean energy. Um, so you know, for the new houses that are built or for old houses that are built. How do we, or how can we provide incentives, whether that's through tax breaks or otherwise? How can we provide incentives for people to put solar panels up? Or um, you know, replace, you know, HVAC systems, whatever it may be, um, that's using more energy. How can we help people uh, be more energy efficient uh, and create and and produce more or green energy?
Okay. Think next we'll have District fifteen, beginning with Brad and then Dina.
Thank you. So environmental sustainability, uh, the first thing I would say about that is that it is a choice. Um, I have personally project managed a couple of affordable housing projects that integrated um. Photovoltaic, solar thermal systems that had rain gardens. There are things that are widely available that we can and we should do, we need to make that choice. I know the city of Madison is already committed to having a hundred percent of its operational electrical, electrical use come from renewable sources by twenty thirty. Uh, that's amazing, it represents a choice. Through our policies, through our building codes that we put out there, we are able to build or not build a sustainable future in terms of the built environment. We, this is something that we actually have in hand, these are decisions that we can make, they're carried out through our building codes. Through our policies, through the regulations. So when we talk about housing, we get to set the standards for how that, that housing is built. We can incentivize things, there's a lot of things we can also require. Through a combination of requirements and incentives, we can achieve the built environment that we want, that is actually responsible, that is environmentally sensitive. That takes into consideration all the things that are really important to us. Like I said, I have personally been involved and done that. Um, it is a doable thing, it is, it can be brushed aside for people who decide that they don't care as much. I think we need to hold them accountable, and the city is really in a key position to do exactly that. As as the main regulatory body for for all the development that happens here. So I look forward to trying to fill that role, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's my turn, right?
That's Dina.
Uh, I am uh, really passionate about making sure that all of the buildings that we include. Especially high-density buildings have a green roofing and have community gardens and more green space. To allow for um, built-in parks and to just give it a sense of 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 um, connection with the earth. I believe that if we put a permeus pavement on our parking lots, that that would be. Be very beneficial and making sure that we remove PFAS from all of our drinking water. We know what's coming, like people are already moving here, they're already migrating from the coasts. To get closer to a temper climate, climate and to get closer to clean water. And this state is prime. Real estate for uh, those who are looking to find a great place. So ensuring that we focus not only five years out, but ten years out, so that we can plan for it. While including that within the building structures that we have, I find that very important.
Well, next, uh, with District sixteen, we'll have Jill and then Kim.
Thank you. Um, let me make sure I go back to the question. Um, so I think protecting our lake, lakes and our drinking water is a number one priority. In terms of creating more housing and being sustainable for our environment. Um, the city must continue to develop, uh, the, must continue to require developers to protect wetlands. And manage stormwater, uh, to protect our water as more and more uh, housing developments are going up. Um, and then we need to continue to grow incentives, um, similar to MG&E's focus on energy. The incentives for Wisconsin homeowners through education and providing free to low-cost. Um, items that will help them reduce energy within their own residential homes. Things like ins- installing solar plant, solar panels, sorry, on um, residential homes. We've been seeing it more so on industrial and and city properties. And so letting that diffuse into our um, neighborhoods as well. Um, having assessments and being able to offer residents of the city those assessments. Um, to take an approach and help them understand how to um, boost comfort and energy efficiency. Within their own homes and neighborhoods. Um, and then continuing to take advantage of any federal and state tax credits that will help um, further incentivize. Uh, these benefits to all of us in our our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kim?
There we go, thank you. Told you I'm just a regular guy. Um, once our pristine and natural areas are gone, they're gone. So we have to protect them uh, with the rapid building that's going on in the city. We've got to be really careful where we're building and how we're building. And as long as we are building, I would love to see, um, I don't know if you want to call it a law. But uh, a strong suggestion that any new building have a, a collection of solar arrays on their roofs. Also, um, I believe Brad mentioned uh, some roof gardens, some, uh, that's awesome. I mean, that that keeps uh, uh, it 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 lowers the temperature of the reflection off of the top of those buildings. Um, I think that's, that's a really good idea. Um. Uh, Dina Nina mentioned PFAS. Um, the F thirty-fives are coming. Um, they are not, or the, the military isn't the cause, the direct cause of the PFAS. The entire airport is with their phone. Now, it's up to the federal government to clean this up. The federal government caused it, and the federal government should clean it up. Um, I know there is talk about it, I don't know, honestly, I'd have to um, educate myself on a little bit. I don't know if it started, but it should start as soon as possible on the federal level. Let's see, I'm going to see the rest of this question here. Let's see, I'm going to see the rest of this question here. I'm going to do a show meeting. What is your best demand housing needs? Let's see, I mentioned any new developments. Again, they should be, there should be control of runoff. Any new buildings, of course, are going to need parking lots. And I believe it was Dean and Nina again that mentioned permeable. Surfaces and it is possible. And they've got to control the runoff. Regarding the lakes, I'm a big lake user and I love what Madison's doing with the reduced salt. And our friends in Manona who live right on the lake as well, they're also, I see it firsthand every day. They also are watching the runoff of the salt, which is raising the, obviously, the salt level in the lakes. I'm a big lately lake user. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at zero. Sorry about that.
Thank you. We we still have closing remarks and each candidate will have a minute to. Offer closing remarks. We're going to begin with District fifteen and then move on to District sixteen and finally. District three and with District fifteen, we'll have Dina first and then Brad. So Dina, you're welcome to start.
Apparently my age is kicking in. I am excited to serve our community. I'm. I'm new to all of this. I'm learning and growing, but I have passion and drive and I have availability. And that I feel like is what's important. And I I love this city so much. I just want to do everything I can to make it a little bit better.
Thank you. And Brad?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I really look forward to the opportunity to try and serve as as alder for this district. I, having lived here for twenty years, I have grown only to love this community that much more. I have been so involved. I stand on on my track record. Of community organizing, of working on projects, of bringing people together. And really working closely with the most vulnerable and the most disenfranchised people, as well as all of my neighbors around me. I want to carry that working history forward for the community that I love so much. I want an even better future. Than the great one that we had, the great city we have right now, I think can only get better. I look forward to working together. At doing that as a community, as a collective. I hope for your vote moving forward. Thanks so much. Good night.
Thank you. And with sixteen, we'll have Kim and then JL.
Thanks again. For all of this District sixteen residents watching and and everybody else as well, I hope that I will earn your vote. I love this district. I grew up two blocks from Lake Manona, like I said. I want the best for everyone in it. I grew up here. I invested my life, my career here. I had opportunities to leave, but I love Madison. I love the east side and I love the neighborhood and I love the sixteenth district. Now that I'm fully full-time retired, I'm freed up to give back and and serve residents of my district. I hope to see everybody around. I hope to hear what matters to all of you. And what concerns you might have. I, again, I will sit down with anybody anytime. At your, at your convenience. You can reach out to me at kimrichman four sixteen, that's F O R, kimrichman four sixteen. At gmail dot com or kimrichman four sixteen, same thing, F O R sixteen dot com for my website. Let's chat. Let's get to know each other. I want to hear your needs, your concerns. I I want to bring greater access and accountability to the common council. I will guarantee I will be part of that. Let's work together. Let's make Madison a better city. As good as it is, let's make it better. And again, I will collaborate. Tenth time maybe tonight with anybody at any time. I've been. On the, I've gone to the north side community meetings, south side community meetings, east and west. And I will continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. And JL?
Thank you. So I'm sure all of you are here tonight because you know that on April fourth. Us eastsiders have a critical choice before us and that is deciding who our next representatives will be on Madison's Common Council. As discussed tonight, our city is growing not only in population, but in diversity of culture, identity, thought, and so much more. It's been said that people closest to the pain should be the closest to the power. And as a former teen mom, recipient of public benefits and service professionals striving to help Madisonians meet their basic needs. I'm no stranger to this pain and struggle. I've also gotten really good at the fine art of code switching and being able to bring diverse perspectives to spaces of prosperity. As such, I've dedicated my life to using the power, privilege, and platforms I possess to serve. With me comes authenticity, compassion, bold leadership, and most importantly, a candidate who isn't one-dimensional and policy-focused. I'd be honored to have your support to continue enhancing these qualities and work. Moving Madison forward by re-electing me on April fourth. Please feel free to learn more about our campaign at jlcurry dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. And and next we'll have District three with Matt and then Derek.
Yeah, so thank you again for running this forum, giving us candidates the opportunity to speak and learn from one another. No thanks to Derek for giving great answers, making this hard on me. But the reason I'm running is to move Madison forward in a way that benefits everyone in the community. Running is a complete step outside my comfort zone, but with all the societal and political turmoil over the past few years. We should know that the status quo isn't working. We need innovative solutions and to make bold lasting positive change. We need to develop collaborative relationships with our neighbors and if elected, whoever is elected with colleagues on the council. So if given the opportunity, I look forward to working collaboratively with members of the community and the council. I think my experiences and my commitment to work for the benefit of the third district would allow for those collaborative relationships. And to bring about bold, positive, lasting change for Madison. I do have a website that my wife set up, so you can check it out. It's vote M V E, which is my initials, vote M V E dot com. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And Derek?
Yeah, thanks for everybody who stuck around and listened in tonight and for the candidates and Matt for a good discussion. I'm running for alder because our neighborhoods in this part of the far east side. Are safe, beautiful, and affordable, and I want to help to keep them that way. I want to bring more housing options to Madison. I want to support investments in our aging water infrastructure and support PFAS treatment systems like over here in the well fifteen on the east side. And bring more traffic improvement, traffic improvements to the roads over here in the District three that carry a lot of traffic and where we're seeing some tough driving behavior. What I have to offer is data-informed decision-making, thoughtful collaboration, and transparency in all of my decision-making. To read more about me or some of the stuff that I care about and want to work on, check out my website. It's voteforderrickfield dot com. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And this concludes our forum. I would like to thank all of our candidates for their. Thoughtful and dedicated responses to their questions tonight. I hope it's given all of our participants a lot of. Ideas to ponder and and choices to help them decide who they'll be voting for. I'd also like to thank all the members of ESP that helped to plan, promote, and publicize. The forum tonight and invite anyone who's watching or part of the east side to. Get involved with East Side Progressives. We're going to be starting canvassing for the spring elections in in two weeks. And we're still looking for hosts and canvassers to get out the vote on the primary on February twenty first and also on April fourth. All six of the candidates that we've heard from tonight will be advancing on to the general election on April fourth. But it's still very important that everyone here vote on during the primary. We have elections for mayor. And state Supreme Court on the primary ballot and it's important that we all get out and participate. So again, I mentioned earlier that this forum has been recorded and we will be. Promoting the link to that recording that will be on YouTube or the East Side Progressives YouTube channel. On our website and on Facebook and in our MailChimp newsletter. So. Thank you once again for everyone for joining and we hope you've enjoyed this forum. Good night.